Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. And city council meeting only. I proudly call this meeting to order, and I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the role.
Bowring?
Here.
Bruno?
Here.
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Kassarag?
Here.
Malaki?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Pashke?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
We have a full house this evening. We begin our council meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I would like to invite our chief budget officer, Ms. Dawkins, to please lead us in the pledge.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Dawkins. Item three, folks, public hearings, special items and presentations. Item 3A is to proclaim February in the City of Geneva as Black History Month. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Bruno, seconded by Pashke. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair determines that's unanimous vote. We thank you very much. Item 3B is to welcome our friends from the Geneva Library Board of -- or, excuse me, Geneva Library Board regarding their presentation on the One Book, One Community program. We also have, of course, distinguished staff with us as well. Welcome. Good to see you again.
Good to see you all. Thank you for inviting me to come and share our One Book, One Community initiative with you again this year. I'm Lauren Maxwell, Information and Reader Services Coordinator at the library, and this will be our fourth annual One Book, One Community program. We're launching on Saturday, the 8th, this upcoming Saturday. This year, we've selected a book that explores the interconnectedness of our experiences and the impact that a book can have on our lives. I brought copies of our book selection to share with you all that you all have, as well as a planned schedule of programs tucked inside those books. Our book selection for this year is No Two Persons by Erica Bowermeister. She is an award-winning and New York Times bestselling author of five novels. This is her fifth. Her books have been Reese's Book Club picks and Indie Next picks. Her writing has been called delightful, gloriously original, and wonderfully moving. No Two Persons highlights the invisible threads that link our lives. As we follow the novel's journey from one character to the next, we're reminded that every life holds its own struggles, and that it's often through shared stories and experiences that we find strength to carry on. In a world that feels isolating sometimes, No Two Persons celebrates the richness that comes from recognizing our need for community. It is a celebration of how stories bridge gaps between us and helping us to see each other and ourselves just a little bit more clearly. So I'd like to highlight some of the events we are hosting this year. As I mentioned, our kickoff takes place on Saturday, the 8th. We will be giving away 1,295 copies of this book generously donated by our friends at the library. Books will also be available for checkout and available through our e-library digitally. We will have supplies on hand again this year for our tiny art show. We have provided -- we will provide 3x5-inch canvases for everybody to create their own tiny art. I brought a lovely little sample that one of our staff members created, and we will be hanging all of these in the lobby as we receive them back as part of our community art show. Erica Bowermeister, the author of the book, will join us in person at the library for our finale on Sunday, April 13th, which is made possible by the support of our library foundation. She will share her insights about the book with our community and will be available to sign books afterward. We also have a new event this year, our Community Resource Fair on March 8th, which will highlight local organizations that provide support services to our community, along with a volunteer fair and blood drive on April 5th. We encourage everyone to attend our community-wide discussion, which will be April 9th, a Wednesday, at 4:30 PM, where we will all discuss together the themes that we find within No Two Persons and will highlight Geneva's community spirit. I sincerely hope you enjoy your book, and I really look forward to seeing all of you at our upcoming events.
Thank you very much. Ms. Maxwell, are you available for questions?
Always.
From the dais, anyone for Ms. Maxwell? Yes, Ms. --
It's just a joy to see your enthusiasm about this. I can tell you found the right place and right job, and it's great to see.
Thank you.
Yes, she has.
That's Ms. Maxwell's father. Anyone else? Yes, alderperson Pashke.
Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for sharing this program with us. I think it's wonderful, and the book sounds like a very timely book for our community to be reading together this year. So, thank you.
Thank you. I hope you enjoy it.
And Ms. Maxwell, just a question from me. Am I the only one to get a large print book?
Yes.
Literally?
We were unavailable -- unable to procure good, like, numbers of copies of large print books this year.
Okay, you don't have to soft-sell that anymore.
So, we do have them available for checkout, but they are not part of our giveaways this year.
I understand, yes. The cost alone must be absorbing it. Okay. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, and of course, trustee Miles, thank you very much. We're delighted, and we're excited, and we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 3C, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing on the fiscal year 2026 City of Geneva budget. Motion by Marx, seconded by -- was that Bowring? Voice votes sufficient to open the public hearing? All in favor of opening the public hearing for the benefit of the public, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is open. Anyone joining us this evening wishes to comment on or ask questions about the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget? This is your chance to do so. Without objection, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Mayor makes that motion, seconded by Bowring. All in favor of closing the public hearing on the fiscal year 2026 budget? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is closed. Thank you very much. Item four, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council. All those items can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion? Pashke makes the motion. Bowring makes the second. Oh, Mayor makes the second. Forgive me. City clerk, please take the role.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Malaki?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
With 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero alderpersons absent, the omnibus agenda has been approved. We jump to item number, hmm, eight, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to please read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Municipal bills for payment total $1,758,922.24.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's city council packet and on the city website.
The motion by alderperson Bruno was to pay the bills as read, which are also available in the city council's packet and on the City of Geneva's website. Is there a second? Seconded by Kassarag. Amy, you can't just, you know, you can't just do that.
Can't you just do that?
No, we need a voice. That's why Brad got in there so impressively. Any questions? City clerk, please take the role.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Malaki?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Malaki?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
With 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero alderpersons absent, the omnibus agenda has been approved. We jump to item number, hmm, eight, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to please read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Municipal bills for payment total $1,758,922.24. Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's city council packet and on the city website.
The motion by alderperson Bruno was to pay the bills as read, which are also available in the city council's packet and on the City of Geneva's website. Is there a second? Seconded by Kassarag. Amy, you can't just, you know, you can't just do that.
Can't you just do that?
No, we need a voice. That's why Brad got in there so impressively. Any questions? City clerk, please take the role.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Malaki?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, zero council members absent, the municipal
bills for payment have been approved by this council. Item 10A, consider Resolution 2025-11 authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement providing for membership in the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network Agreement. Bowring with the motion. Pashke with the second. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network has reorganized their organization from a not-for-profit to an intergovernmental agency. So the reorganization does not change the city's opportunities or obligations to either provide or request mutual aid for public works operations or recovery efforts. But due to the reorganization, we need a new IGA to be entered into by all member agencies. So in your packet was the approved IGA provided by the association for approval and adoption, and again, it's in alignment with our previous membership agreement. You all be aware, this is what comes in really handy when we have those storms like we had last year. We're able to get equipment, people to come in and help us and assist and get the cleanup done quickly. So definitely something we want to maintain. So I'm the only one here this evening, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Questions for the city administrator from the dais. Seeing none, sensing none, city clerk, please take the role.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Malaki?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Ten council members voting in the affirmative, zero council members voting in the negative,
and zero council members absent, item 10A has been approved by this city council. Item 10B, which also includes my vote, is to consider Resolution 2025-12 adopting the fiscal year 2026 City of Geneva budget. Motion by Marx, seconded by Kassarag. Ms. Dawkins, anything else you want to add? What happened? Did I --
Did I call it out?
Oh, okay. So I would just say, so for your consideration this evening, is the resolution adopting
the City of Geneva fiscal year 26 budget, including all 37 funds? The preliminary budget has been available on the city's website since January 9th, and the public hearing was noticed both in the Suburban Chronicle and the Fox Valley Daily Herald. The city council was presented the preliminary budget at a special city council meeting on January 13th, and we had subsequent discussions following the committee of the whole meeting on January 21st. And then, most of you have noticed, we've transitioned to an online interactive budget over the last year, so it's a little different. But I think, once we get past some of the growing pains, it'll be, you'll find that there's a lot of information, and it's easier to find once you know where you're looking. So with that, that's all I have. Mayor?
Excellent. From the dais, any questions, any comments? Alderperson Swanson?
Thank you, Mayor. No comments. I have one request to make a change, which I'd like to propose, and that is, I think with our facilities study and knowing that we may be going to referendum in the future and asking our taxpayers to pay more, I think we should be as tight with the budget as possible. And one item that has always bothered me is having the lobbyist agreement out there. So I would like to propose stripping that out. I believe it's in the next year's budget for $55,000. We do not have an agreement right now, so we're working on a month-to-month basis. I don't see the need for that expense, and I think it would show the community that we're willing to tighten our belts to. So I would move to strip that out of the budget.
I would second that.
Lack of a second. Second's been amended, offered, okay. Now on the floor is to discuss that matter. For those of you unaware, our lobbyist has indeed been working with us for some time now. He has been, I believe, successful with respect to not only securing funds but re-securing funds representing our voice in Springfield on issues ranging from energy, transportation, housing, LGDF, you name it. In fact, just this past year, as all of you are, I think, well aware, an additional $2 million was secured to assist in the East State Street corridor reconstruction. That $2 million was, for all practical purposes, wiped out by our friends at IDOT because of this lobbyist's relationship with the professional staff and the secretary at IDOT. We were able to secure that funding yet again and not prevent additional delays on that wildly important, critical, and oh-so-long-waited-for reconstruction. With that, the floor is open. Yes, alderperson Bowring?
I do appreciate the sentiment behind alderperson Swanson's proposal, sort of the, I guess, the idea of the city making sacrifices, but I think that we already have a very tight budget that is really being responsible with taxpayer money. And I think respectfully, oftentimes by spending the money wisely, we save money in the long run. I believe, based on my conversations with staff and in part the sorts of things that the mayor was just referencing, that this is actually a very valuable investment on the part of the city. And so I am not in favor of removing that line item from the budget. I think there are likely to be all sorts of interesting things coming down the pike at the state level, and, you know, will be impacted also by changes at the federal level. And I think now is a time when we really do want to have representation in Springfield so that we make sure that we don't lose important opportunities on the whole host of issues that the mayor was referencing. You know, there is likely to be big changes made to transportation, among other things, at the state level. And I think while we are part of various consortiums like Metro West that are also working on these issues, there's a difference between that organization that's representing so many different communities and somebody that is just looking out for Geneva's interests. So I do not support taking that out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderperson Bruno, alderperson Kassarag?
Thank you. There probably was a time early on when I might have sided with the idea of stripping it, but I feel we do get more out of it than we put into it, so I'd like to see it stay in. Thanks.
Alderperson Kassarag?
Just a point of clarification on sort of the preface of Alderman Swanson's motion that the funds came out of taxpayer dollars. I believe they came out of ARPA funds, and I was wondering if maybe you could clarify that for us.
No, actually, the consultant for the referendum came out of ARPA funds.
Oh.
The lobbyist comes out of, it's actually split between the general fund, and depending upon if they're working on electric legislation, then it's paid out of the electric fund. Depending upon what types of legislation he's working on is how we charge the accounts.
I think the preface was, we have already wasted some taxpayer dollars on the referendum, wasn't it?
It had nothing to do with the referendum.
Nothing.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderperson Kilburg?
I had the opportunity last month to attend the Metro West meeting, and over breakfast, I had an opportunity to visit with a couple of mayors, Batavia, Carpenter'sville, and asked them if they employed a lobbyist to work the legislature on their behalf, and neither of them said that they did. I guess, I guess it would be beneficial, at least for me, to maybe have our lobbyist attend. I've never met our lobbyist, and based off of what we're paying the guy, it'd be nice if he would attend at least one council meeting a year so that he could maybe give us a legislative update or maybe tell us how he's earning his compensation. So again, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I guess I feel as though Alderman Swanson raises a good point that it would be nice to maybe have more support for the expenditure. And again, I'm not necessarily opposed. I think lobbyists can serve an important role, but it'd be nice, since, you know, $55,000 is a significant amount of money, and the fact that he's also down there lobbying for other communities and earning maybe like income, it could be a pretty nice job, I guess, working the legislature and promoting various pieces of legislation that would be in Geneva's benefit. But, and maybe this year, as was pointed out, maybe this is the year that we really need a lobbyist, because based off of what I'm hearing in the national news, federal funding toward the improvements on East State Street might be in jeopardy. I don't know what impact he might have on federal funding, but again, those are all questions I'd like to ask our lobbyist, and it would be nice to know what he looks like. That's all I have.
Thank you. Alderperson Ruby?
Thank you. I'm just going to comment on, some of the comments I've heard are, you know, bringing our voice to the table, looking out for Geneva's interest. I don't see any evidence of either of those things. I would appreciate some reports or some updates on what initiatives the lobbyist is working on, where and when our voice is defined or determined. I think it's misleading to make these blanket statements when I feel like we're kept in the dark. And as a council member, being in the dark, how is the community possibly going to have any idea what the lobbyist is doing, or why, or what direction that lobbyist is getting? Thanks.
Alderperson Malaki, then alderperson Mayor?
Yeah, just to, I agree with some of the comments as well, and I would like to see, you know, just a regular update, you know, from the person that we hired, just to, whether it's in person or, you know, even just a quick email blast on just some information, just so the residents, the taxpayers, and the stakeholders know, you know, where that money is going, and just there's a comfort level there with transparency, I think. Thank you.
Alderperson Mayor?
Well, I think we should keep the budget there, and that with all that's happening in the world right now and the way that our money flows through the state, I think that it makes a lot of sense to have somebody in the know and use them wisely, and I think that that's what's been done so far. And, yeah, I'm in favor of keeping the budget and using it when we need it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderperson Pashke?
I appreciate everybody's comments, and I would agree that I appreciate the initial sentiment behind the motion. I think it's most important to keep in mind that things are changing rapidly, and I agree with everyone that said that this might be the year that we need this the most, unfortunately. But I'd also say that I don't feel like I've been kept in the dark. I think the question has been asked several times, at least since I've been on council. I know we've received updates on the work that the lobbyist has done, so I just wanted to clarify that, and I know that we can always reach out with questions at any time, and they get answered, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Just a couple of points for elucidation. All of you received, I believe you received, an email from the Illinois Municipal League today regarding some of the legislation percolating in Springfield affecting fire, police, all sorts of different issues, operations, infrastructure. In the first two weeks of the Illinois General Assembly's 104th session, the first two weeks, 1,800 bills were submitted. I will recall, and I think all of you will as well, when we lobby, we're the most powerful voices of all. When we can't get in the door, we rely on those who can. We rely on those amplifying our voice when we can't either A, be in Springfield or at such events as Dean, or, excuse me, alderperson Kilburg referenced, Metro West, whether it be the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, the Illinois Municipal League, et cetera. I invite all of you to join us on the drive-down on March 5th to lobby these men and women who respectfully state rather eloquently that, quote, "They represent us." Many of those legislators, as you know, came from this very environment. It's really interesting to note that, and I'm going to get this wrong, so forgive me, but I believe that somewhere in the neighborhood of 80% of all legislators in Springfield today have a tenure of 10 years or less. So when we talk about local government distributive funds, and we talk about how back in 2011 we got 10%, today we're getting 6.25%, that's a significant hit, obviously, to our budget. We all know that. When we talk about our own personal lobbying of the legislative bodies at the state and federal level, we all, I think, try to do our best. When we lobby our colleagues locally for particular positions, I think we've fallen short sometimes. Your phone calls get returned when you contact our representatives at the House or the Senate. Absolutely, they do. And I know for a fact that sometimes they wish more people would call, and I will be on record saying this, that oftentimes the calls are polite, but they're not terribly productive. So the keeping on and keeping on is what we have to do. All of us are busy, we all know that. This gentleman's job is to do exactly that work. I think it's a sound investment. If you looked at purely dollars and cents, it's been very well-received in terms of the productive and yielding revenue that we desperately need. So that's my two cents. No pun intended. On the motion, unless there's something else. Mr. Kilburg?
No, I just wanted to point out, you know, our elected officials, I guess I went to the Metro West meeting, and you look forward to that opportunity to interact with your legislators. And again, you know, Geneva, you know, we're impacted by probably two, three, or four, maybe, total legislators that service Geneva. Three, I guess?
Five, believe it or not, yeah.
Five, okay, five. I guess what was disappointing was the fact that we didn't even have a majority of the elected officials that serve Metro West in attendance. So I guess the opportunity to visit with elected officials from the various counties up and down the Fox that are a part of Metro West and having such a poor turnout by elected officials, I thought was disappointing. And if you have an opportunity to interact with your elected official sometime here in the near future, I'd ask them if they were in attendance. And I think that, that as an elected official, this type of a meeting, I think, was a real opportunity for them to meet new city officials, not only elected officials, but our staff as well. And I thought that that was disappointing, and I hope their attendance record in Springfield is better than it was at Metro West.
To alderperson Kilburg's point, three of the five representatives and senators who represent Geneva were not present, which is disappointing. You know, a conversation over a cup of coffee is often more productive.
I mean, oh, sure, we had bad weather that morning.
Well, that wasn't --
But there were a lot of elected officials and staff that made it there. And it was up at Elgin Community College, a great facility, and great words that were shared by the mayor of Elgin, talking about Elgin Community College and the opportunities it provides for young people in the Fox Valley, between Elgin and Aurora, that have an opportunity to go to Elgin, that may not afford to go to a four-year school. And the other point is, is that it offers trade opportunities, which I think is important as well as we look at our society today. But again, those are types of things that are really informative and an opportunity to bend their ear for a few minutes and to visit also with other elected officials, municipal and staff members that are in attendance and talking about like concerns and like issues of interest to one another. So again, I just thought I'd share that since we were on this topic.
Thank you. On the motion offered by Swa, alderperson Bruno?
Point of order.
Of course.
An aye vote will --
Yeah, point of order.
An aye vote strikes that --
An aye vote is in favor of removing the line item from the budget. A nay vote is to maintain that line item in the budget.
Thank you.
City clerk, please take the role.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Nay.
Bruno?
Nay.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Nay.
Kassarag?
Nay.
Maliki?
Nay.
Marks?
Nay.
Mayor?
Nay.
Pashke?
Nay.
The motion is defeated with eight nays, two ayes. We are still on item...
Point of order?
Yes.
Since you vote on the budget itself, do you get a vote on this amendment to it, or proposed amendment to it?
You do? Okay, I, I vote nay. With two ayes and nine nays, the matter is defeated. We're still on item 10B. The main motion to approve the budget as presented fiscal year 2026. City Clerk, please take the role.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maliki?
Aye.
Mayor Burns?
Aye. With 11 votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, and zero council members absent, the fiscal year 2026 City of Geneva budget, Resolution 2025-12, has been approved. We are now at public comment. We invite anyone with us this evening who wishes to share any comments or ask any questions. Now is your chance to speak, our chance to listen. New business from the dais, anyone? New, well, gave them the chance. You guys want to say something? Come up to the podium, as always.
Hi, I'm Robyn Chiona from the Geneva Chamber, and wearing my Geneva blue, even though I'm a bulldog, but that's okay.
Let the record reflect that she is a bulldog.
Just want to tell you about a few things we have going on with us. We have a coffee crawl on April 17th, and that will be downtown Geneva and beyond. 30-plus businesses will participate, and the opening will start next week. And most importantly, I want to tell you, we have a new member reception on February 27th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at Riverside Receptions. You can meet some of our newest new members. They're not all from Geneva, but they're businesses, so I welcome all of you to attend. And I'd like to introduce Chris Wallace, one of our new board members.
I, welcome, or hello, I'm the one that's welcome. It's been a long weekend, long sick kids at home. So, just want to introduce myself, Chris Wallace, just joined the Geneva, Geneva Chamber Board late last summer, thanks to Michael Wilson and his leadership there. So, I've been getting ingrained there, excited to be here and heckle the mayor on anything possible. If you guys were at the Swedish Days Beer Tent last year...
Please turn the, please turn the microphone off.
Yeah, the microphone, keep it on. If you were at the Swedish Days Beer Tent last year, you did see a cardboard cutout of me. Don't know if that's gonna come back this year, but I'll be doing everything I can to support the community financially and bringing people together here locally as well. So, great to see everyone, and thanks for having us.
Good to see you. And Mr. Wallace is a real estate professional.
Yes. So, don't, don't yell at me after the end.
Anyone else from the audience? From the dais, new business? Kassarag makes a motion to adjourn. All in favor of the motion, so eloquently stated by the Alderperson. Please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, folks. Thank you very much.